I have six thirty and call the meeting number eighteen twenty-three to order. We have of the Eastwood's are planning the zoning commission, we have a forum, we have four regular members. And with Anne's absence, Dave, I'm gonna ask you to sit in as a voting member tonight.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Do we have any added agenda items?
We have a CEO report that Danielle will be bringing in.
Alright, so can I have a motion to accept to have the CEO report heard under other business?
I make a motion to have the CEO report to be heard under other business.
We have a motion, second, seconded by Frank, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Add that to our agenda. Legal notice, we have a legal notice. Swins are planning its own commission, will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March twenty-second at six thirty P M. This will be a virtual meeting. Details regarding how to attend will be published in the commission's agenda and made available on the town's website. The commission is proposing a text amendment to add section five oh three point three outdoor dining as an accessory use. A full copy of the proposed text is available on the planning zoning commission's webpage of the town's website. All interested persons may attend this meeting and provide verbal or written comments to the board regarding this application. This was published in the Journal Inquirer on March fourteenth and again on March sixteen. Shit, we are at the public participation portion of our meeting. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to speak on something that is not on tonight's agenda? Do not see anybody attending through Zoom. Is there anyone that we haven't recognized? That is a no. Moving on to approval of minutes. Minutes of meeting eighteen twenty-two held on March eighth. Does anyone have any additions, corrections, any discussions? Okay, here are none. I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion, we approve the regular meeting minutes, number eighteen twenty-two, March eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, as presented.
There's a motion on the floors, is there a second?
Second.
Second, give it back, Frank, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any new applications to be saved?
None.
Anything under performance, sponsor actions, permits, extensions?
No.
Continued public hearings? We'll move right into our new public hearing. Town initiated text amendment for outdoor dining as accessory use and section five oh three point three.
We hung on to it. Because we were so early with the drafting and thought we would have slew of other text changes to go with it. Now the date has come. It's done, April first, the executive orders onset and so. So essentially, it's extending the allowance of outdoor dining to any licensed restaurant, food establishment as a right, so the zoning comment would be required per these regulations for outdoor dining as accessory use. And that would be a staff administered department providing appropriate information. We're also requiring several departments to review and approve as part of that. Home department, the CCA, fire marshal, building officials. And then we have a caveat of the outdoor entertainment or consumption alcohol only. It requires a special use permit.
Even if they have an existing liquor permit for inside consumption, they need a special for the under consumption?
No, they're not having food.
Oh, strictly, I got you.
That's how I read it.
So if they're just a bar or a winery or something, I don't know. If there's, if there was no food service component, then they would not be allowed to take advantage of an outdoor dining by right?
By right.
The upper portion, it said they have to be a restaurant or food service establishment.
Right, so they're, if they're a restaurant or food service establishment, they provide the requirements that we have here and they can get it approved through staff. But if they're not.
Then they have to go to specialty.
Right, which is synonymous with the liquor control process because to add a patio, you need an extension permit from them. But there's, so like for example, similar to like a note, they would not be able to, when they came before you with the tent, that might fall on their, this by right.
Do we need to ask if they plan on erecting any kind of shelter?
All building permit party. Well, the building market.
Under the by right stuff?
Yeah, I mean, as a, as a, I don't know, he's, if they're into, if they intend to add any type of physical modifications or structures. Because if it's gonna be by right, that somebody may want to build something more, you know, sturdy than just a, you know, a tech canopy that a lot of them used previously. So that maybe also require a building department review.
Well, yeah, so if they said they were gonna do that, then.
So for a tent, do we need an inspection?
There would need to be a building.
So.
And the fire marshal.
Okay, so do they make that intent known at the time of the application?
I mean, I think it would be included, but this is just for zoning, those things are outside of that.
In the floor plan and layout, not our tables.
How.
And it's what you're suggesting is a P. Specifications or locations of any.
And any type of structure.
Well, I think that what he's bringing up, like, or the question he's asking, or it brings up a good point of if somebody wanted to cover an existing outdoor patio, would you? How would, what, do you want that to be handled? Because we talked about the fact that the existing regs for site plan modification are not really well-written, so if somebody had an outdoor patio and they wanted to get approval, everything would be by right, but if they wanted to cover it with a permanent pergola.
Now it's a semi-modification.
Well, what do you, maybe we can put something in there to clarify that.
And like Sofia, they, they hire a company that comes out and puts the tent up. That's what they, but somebody can just go to Costco and buy up.
No, they can't, but. Well, that's, that's.
Fire rated, it won't go through inspection, anything, anything bigger than, I think it was four hundred square feet, we went through this when we did this. They had to submit drawings, they had to show us where they were doing it, they, it was, and then everybody under the sun had to sign off on it. Okay, and that's basically what we're doing again, right?
That's what we get.
And believe me, the fire marshal's not gonna let, let anything go by and, and the, if they're building something permanent.
That's all looked at the handle.
Right.
Now it's, now it's.
They know they gotta pull permit.
Okay.
Given someone a test.
Anything over five.
Just kinda wanna make, make it obvious that somebody doesn't just even start off saying, well, I'm just gonna do a patio and then come in July and it's, I need to put it up. Just goes ahead and puts something there.
But what if they wanted to go to the barnyard and pick up a covered, like a permanent pergola, something with a roof and open side, would you? Well, you're right, but would you expect them to come before you here under a commercial site plan modification, or would you be comfortable with staff proving that in the office? If they were just taking their existing outdoor patio and covering it, not walls, heat, A C, the whole nine yards.
Administrative, yeah, and you know, all it, it beats all the setback requirements and then all that, it doesn't trigger any other regulation.
And like Joseph Ramsey looking at it, fire marshal looking at every.
Well, but I, I believe that should be a staff decision because to drag them to, for us, and then we have the.
They want something that must be a thousand, you know, two thousand square feet or something, very large. The, anything else stand for this?
Uh, we did hear from Chris. I know. You look back at the testing regulations.
Don't see a drafted motion on this, is there one required in this?
There is, I did not draft.
And we're good here, this is a public hearing, anyone from the public like to speak on this? How do you, does with? Who else has joined us?
I can host.
And then I guess we can close the public hearing, entertain a motion for closing the public hearing.
I make a motion, we close the public hearing and propose text amendment for outdoor dining, section five oh three.
There is a motion, is there a second, second? We have a motion of a second, any discussion? During none, I'll call for a vote, all's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous, public hearing is closed. You comfortable wordsmithing a motion? I have nothing further to say, I want to make a motion to about this text amendment.
I make a motion, adopt a text amendment to be added to section five oh three point three outdoor dining as accessory use.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, is any discussion?
Do you wanna add that language into there, or just, um, what, how did you guys think about, about the structures?
We'll leave it, we'll say.
Just not add.
It's, it's part of the site plan and we addressed administratively.
We don't, okay, so we don't need that way.
Any, any further discussion? Here are none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous, passes unanimous. Full business. The application for law is being tabled now till April twelve. And the two ninety-eight South Main is still going through zoning board of appeals.
Correct. Okay. CBA is on April fourth.
We need a motion to continue those to the further meetings.
And so.
Okay, I think they're.
Yep. So that puts us at new business temporary events discussion. We have a
window. You have the table, you have, we have, going through our regulations, we just kind of picked out temporary events, usual events, just so you can see, it's kind of shotgun style, we'll hear a little there. Frank, did you get this in your packet?
Yes.
No. I did not.
There you go. So really, I was trying to just put on paper things that are called out in the regulations. Farm regulations, auctions and carnivals. Sales. Mission dice displaying.
On the farm stands, should do you wanna have anything there selling to be? Raids on the farm.
It is detailed that way, I probably shouldn't put that in there.
Yeah.
In the requirement section in each company farm, yeah. I'd like to say that.
That would differentiate them from a farmer's market, right?
Oh.
Where would the farmer's market fall with that?
That's a good question, we had, you're here. I can't tell many names.
Pure.
Coming in, asking about sponsoring events, like having a business similar to like what the farmer's market is, where there's several different entities coming in and selling their wares.
I've seen they've done similar to at the outer hollow brewery and wine, that they have open events there and the vendors, right?
So that's something, it's a different kind of labor, where it's a business, it's going from different locations. We talked about that being maybe a temporary event, permanent, but you would need the property owner signing off. Just be like a third party. So I think the farmer's market is very similar to that, that it's not called out in our regulations anywhere. That's something.
But the problem conceivably would be parking. That's the words being held in this, which is attic parking. And then remember years ago, they used to hold a, like a rent-to-space egg sale events like that too, so it's not the individual doing the thing, so they're, they're selling spots that you could now have a, let the space kind of do, so that's gonna dress differently than, than the egg sales.
Like a flea market.
Exactly.
I think that a farmer's market, because it mentions hayrides, festivals, corn maze, petting zoo, which is in our agriculturally temporary seasonal events, which kicks you to four oh five, which is what you have in the second column, or second row. It says, subject to second events, blah, 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 section four oh five. So it kicks you back to that, so it's not, it doesn't, but I think that's probably where that would come under.
Yeah, police, building official, fire, all that.
But it's not a separate, so. It's here. Per season, per section four or five.
See, now that one limited to saying twice a year, but when they run seasonal farmers' market, they run them, you know, ten, twelve weeks in a row, so if it fell under that requirement, then it'll only go out twice a year.
Yeah, well, I think it could also depend on where the property, what property is having the farmer's market, if you have a farmer's market twelve weeks a year, every year that farmers are growing produce, that's probably a use, probably not a temporary event, right, that may be an accessory use and you can maybe look at it. Yeah, it probably, the requirements don't seem like they're with for some. For us, here?
Yeah.
I don't think we have a definition of the temporary.
Is temporary two or three times a year, or is it six or eight times a year?
Yeah, that's four or five, right? Because they have farm stores, farm stands.
Few times for town, yeah.
That's cool. Temporary use was defined, twice a year, several. The terms, temporary. So, and then again, if it's only one day on a Saturday versus, you know.
So we're doing our Saturday, our summer.
Farm standing, you did it twelve or fifteen times a year, which a lot of towns do, then that should be an accessory use, shouldn't?
Yeah, it just says the twice per year.
It says twice per.
Just a seasonal permit.
Yeah.
And it's a seasonal with that.
Remember we did the farm, right, they'll, they're a little size, a lot of the structural size, it's up every, every weekend.
I think you, you put limited to times per year, you're gonna get a lot of stabbing.
Well, that's what's already there.
Yeah. So that, I mean, that's what we're trying to look at this.
So what happened to the summer concerts, they're every other week also, no?
Is that accessory use? Do the towns exempt themselves?
A lot, most towns exempt themselves from the zoning, because you inherently, you know, a school does not fit in a residential zone amongst houses, a town hall, that we are usually doing something counter to what everybody else is.
What you show us be doing.
Yeah, most towns are, and it also puts you in a position where you don't have.
Sponsored event, it's exempt.
Well, sponsored property, that's.
It's, it's on-town property and it's
right, if it was on-town property, yeah. But if, if we weren't, then you could run into a situation where the town was being compelled to meet its own zoning regulations for something that, you know, keep you in a cyclical issue.
You said if it's our town property, so, I mean, what if, are people allowed to like rent out the pavilion?
Well, right, you have a pavilion rental, we, we're booked every weekend halfway through the summer, what do you do? Are you, will require them to? Why? So why are they exempted?
Cause you're the parent.
No, it's.
These are private people.
I'm gonna rent the pavilion and, and host a birthday party and I'm gonna have, I don't know, it's, it's a seventieth birthday party for my father or whatever, and, and I'm bringing his whole family from New Jersey, it's gonna be, could be a hundred fifty people. Do I pull a permit? It's, and it's, it's, it's on-town property, I guess, you know, we're using the pavilion for an example, or, you know, the, the park.
Right.
Or Scout Hall, like they have, they host weddings and stuff at the Scout Hall. It's more than a hundred people, do they need a full permit? It's on-town property.
Private events versus open to the public?
Right.
What about Melissa doing all the stuff with the parks up there?
Well, the town, we're exempt, the town is exempt.
If the town is running, it's one thing, but if a private individual is renting town property.
Yeah, that's, that's what I'm saying.
I mean, again, somebody kinda needs to know about what their intentions are.
Well, I think Melissa.
Well, right, but you have to go through and fill out an application with her and go blah, 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 if you're gonna use the park, you just don't show up and use the park.
Right.
Right, I mean, we have both sides, they, they rent both sides out.
Does she have any kind of triggers and say, okay?
Well, if you want alcohol, you have to get approval of an alcohol permit now, and you can only appear in wine and you can't sell it, but you have to fill out an application, but what other trigger?
Number, number of people, what's, what's, what's the restroom capacity?
Volleyball tournament up there, there, there must have been five hundred people up there, because, I mean.
At some point, you trigger, I don't know how many restrooms are there, but at a certain point, you.
Well, that's.
Do you need additional temporary restrooms brought in because?
But that's, do you, that's, that's the whole question, do they run it through you, or does she regulate, she regulates that beside the point, but.
It seems like it belongs in park and rec.
Yeah.
If you're gonna rent the park, well, that's one of them.
Not alone.
That, that's fine, but there still should be, you know, trigger points, say, okay, you know, at, at five hundred people, you need to have temporary bathrooms or something to that effect, you know?
They'd still have to operate under the public health code.
Right.
None of that stuff.
If you serve food up there, you have to go through, I mean, but if it's a party, if it's a private party, you don't have to get it, you know, as long as you're not selling food, you don't have to get a health permit.
Yeah, so, but I mean, that, that's what I'm saying is, do we need to loop her in and say, look, if you're renting the pavilion, you gotta get a.
Gotta check these things off.
Or no, or you gotta get a permit.
Permit.
Other than for alcohol, right now, that's all she does is, you know.
Application, your money, that's.
And it's part of her application, it's filled out and, you know. How far do you go with that? Yeah, I don't think there's any inherent issue with the town using town property for.
I'm talking about a private individual. Individuals renting town property.
But I mean, that's, that's, that's currently how it's been done for how long?
Fifty years.
Has there been a problem?
No.
So do we need to regulate?
No, there's been a problem.
So our point, we're just trying to regulate somebody like Bastel's doing what they wanted to do, not Bastel's, I'm sorry, they don't call it something.
Yeah, but the problem is Bastel. Is it defendable if somebody comes before us and says, says, if I do it on this piece of property, I need a permit, but if I do the exact same thing on this piece of property, I don't need.
But one's a town park that's approved as a public space, one's a private plaza that is got a parking lot, fire lanes, and businesses that, you know, need to have access and curbing up the state roads and, you know, a lot of those businesses, if you, if you have a small shop that you sell, you know, like, what if we just approve a guy who does like grooming and things, you don't have a public bathroom, so if you wanna have a, if you wanna have a, a whole big dog expo, you don't have a place for people to use restaurants, the park is set up for it.
Yeah.
So I don't, you know.
But what happens if somebody uses the wreck, the town, the town wreck and somebody unfortunately drowns?
Well, they have to provide a, an insurance policy.
You have to give us a certificate of insurance, when you rent the pavilion, you have to, i- if it's like Quoter Farms brings in, uh, they do, they rent it twice a year, they bring in, they have to provide a certificate of insurance, there's no swimming unless lifeguards are on duty, all those, I mean, all that's all checked off with her, you know, and there's no gatehouse, means that the gate, you know, I mean, you know, she's trying to balance, but everything else that's going on down there, so pavilion rentals are an income. So. And again, it's a Mike's point is there's never been a problem though, there's plenty of ample parking, there's, there's bathrooms on the top of it, there's bathrooms on the bottom of it, you know, there.
And when Basil, and when Basil did that, what, he had an event, I talked to him too and told, we need to call for a permit, you can't just have a, flat out that.
The way I'm thinking is, is like, okay, if, if Sophia decides to do a yard, you know, a, a parking lot, bizarre, okay, the places that are, are better yet, Walmart decides they're gonna put vendors in their parking lot. Every day, there's two accidents in Walmart, now you're gonna put people out there, that's, I can understand that, but I just clarification for the parks, because I do a lot with the parks.
So in the office and practice, we've asked that question, we had the office building that was having cookout for their employees. And we didn't ask for a temporary event permit for that, because it wasn't open to the public.
Right. Yeah, I mean, we do employee recognition all the time, so it's not really safe, not.
But if they were gonna have it, like, I don't know, the sports dome wanted to have a vendor.
Fair.
And that place is a messer park it over there.
You have people come in and, yeah, so I guess the trigger that is, is it private or is it public?
Right.
But a, a private wedding event, if somebody wanted to have one, not in a park, on, on somebody's farm or something like that.
Well, somebody's farm, yeah, it's not a. If you're, yeah, private event, I don't think there's much anybody can do, because it's like having a birthday party, just.
Right.
But I think, well, my understanding when we were talking about this is, this is more of trying to have a discussion so that we can facilitate or come up with a process to facilitate these events, right? Because people show up and they say, I wanna have this event, but they're not thinking, oh, I need a special permit, so that's ninety days, right? And so the problem is if we send them through the commission process, not that, he doesn't move quickly, but they don't necessarily have that kind of time, within, so most cases, I think the event has to be postponed or canceled. Cancelled, and I think that was sort of what started this, is like, how do we come up with something that can move quick enough that we can make sure they've checked all the boxes without having them have to push their event to the next year?
I like when Melissa does.
Well, right, I mean, okay, so for example, a note this. Well, right, I mean, okay, so for example, La Notas, La Notas wants to have a vendor parent there. Would he have to come in and get a permit? You know, you know, or a food market, he's gonna run a food market.
And all those vendors.
Food trucks.
So I would say, yes, we fill out our temporary event permit and we circulated through the various departments, the health department, the police.
But if you wanted to, so, so now what you're saying is if you wanted to say, okay, fine, I'll, I'll rent, I'll rent the park and I'll do it at the park, and he doesn't need.
Right.
Yeah, that's.
So that makes sense, that's.
Yeah, but then he's paying rent, he's gonna wanna, I mean, I'm just using him as an example, not picking on him by only. And that's why, as long as we establish some kind of a checklist or something that the park department does, that would be the same thing that we would ask the applicant that comes before us, you know.
Right.
Have you looked at parking, have you looked at bathroom, have you looked at, you know, do you need additional traffic control, any of that stuff? So it's, it's still handled the same way.
Sure, and some enhancements, Mike shared, Talon's temporary event, or special event application, asks a series of questions. Triggering questions, what type of event are you having? Goes into who you should consult with about what. Series of screen questions.
So.
To help me think things through.
Estimated attendance, that's a big one.
Our application doesn't ask, you know, is this public, private, how many people?
So here's, here's the best example that is showcase for dogs, the dog thing on one four, do they need a?
Yeah, they should have done a lot of them though.
Do they need a permit, should they, every time they do an event, should they?
They're not open to the public.
Well, they are.
Well, that's, they're, they're, they're way out of there, they have campers and everything else overnight.
Well, it's a weekend, so, you know, it's kinda like if you've ever been to the Farmington does a huge market, people literally go there for the weekend or Brookfield, if you wanna talk about a traffic nightmare, go to Brookfield, they have a deep shop, you know, I mean, but.
It's so.
Well, let's talk about them, I'm one forty, they have ample parking. I don't know what their facilities, but I think they.
Was she permitted to do that, like, is that a special use permit that was issued to that?
I don't, I was here for that, I don't think that was, that would just won't be training and dog agility and stuff like that, I thought.
I mean, no, they did say that they were gonna have events, but they said it was, it was private, that it wasn't open to the public, that it was only their members and, you know, they all that are showing their animals.
Dogs, certain dogs, a class of a dog, Saluki dog, the Saluki Summer Splash is the one I was involved in the most, that is a private club that comes in there and uses it for four days.
Right, so if you, if I wanted to go watch it.
Yeah, they bring in a USA dumpster, they bring in portable bathrooms. There's no food that's prepared there, it was always delivered there, people ordered it, food came in. Never any prepared food outside, this summer, I, last summer, I saw there was a food truck there for a day or two, but it couldn't stay long, it rolled in, worked out for a day or two. It's like, it's knocked down.
I kind of think they extended their use more than they should have through the year, kind of nobody's really looking. You know, they drive by there, three hundred people, there's campers and.
They're, they're part of a very, very large club, people that expand.
Yeah. I said a nice thing.
But regarding temporary.
But that's what I'm saying, that, that's probably the only regular thing that happens, you know, I mean.
So, but it doesn't even.
Beer and wine takes things, we've had.
Beer and wine, they have to get an alcohol permit through the police, but they don't do nothing with us.
Well, Leslie would come in here and, and from the Joe, he would come in here and we would do the event and.
Yeah, but did you see, you see the size of what he does, I mean, he's got some. He's got a band there and a tent. But that I can understand.
But he did the fire department, he did the police department, he did the whole dog and pony show, did bathrooms. So he did what he was supposed to do. Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I'm circulating that one right now.
For their farmer's market.
They have a festival, bear line.
Oh.
Hookout style.
So I kinda like this, she's pretty good.
Yeah, I mean, I just, I like how we will trigger an applicant to like, oh, I didn't think of that, I didn't think of that. And then anything else, you wanna add a column for not applicable, for yes, no, or any of you?
Yeah, and, and this one, they actually do the insurance requirements for town parks.
Talon has a number of, like the lodge and other things that they, you can rent.
They have all the events on green order.
Seen it on the, on the, a theater, a few rooms up there, that, I mean, it's a beautiful, it's set so far back and beautiful fireplace at the end. It really is nice, and it's all town hall, it's like really weird, and it's very, very cost effective.
Yeah.
Saving up volume, the audience, and when the band goes start. The call to screen company.
Yeah.
We have. Do we have a noise or?
No. We do not have a noise on this. Um, we have a guest here that wants to speak to us specifically on this subject, so, so identify yourself.
Hello, Hewitt.
For the record, we need your name and address.
Okay, Hewitt Gaines, sixty-one Rice Road, Robbro.
Thank you.
I'm a small business, trying to get developed here in East London. I do retail clothing online. I wanted to be able to vend around town or find a place, I don't have a specific like pretty more type of establishment, I'm all online. So I wanted to find out the rules, the zones, and how I could facilitate that or throw more pop-up events where other companies are vending with me. And that can be more in the community.
Um, do you have locations that you have in mind for?
I first thought of Main Street Grill, that parking lot and that place. Say like every Sunday, I was trying to get more of the local businesses to try to fit in and then amongst ourselves, you know, trying to get one community things going on, I do a painting set here on Thursday, just trying to learn what works and what don't.
This definitely sounds like using some of the park spaces is a definite option for you, that, that's available. And then I guess beyond that will be how, how these regs flow with what's gonna be the requirements for special event permitting.
I gave you Melissa Altis' number.
Correct.
Good.
I'm sure he's looking for high visibility areas too, obviously.
Yeah.
Our goal is to try and get as much exposure as possible.
Say that again? Okay.
Right on here, Brooklyn School on weekends.
Oh, from the school on weekends.
You give me the opportunity, I'm learning the work, so I'm here to learn and move forward, anything it takes to move forward, I'm with.
That's, that's kind of our goal here is to work through how we can make it easier on people to hold events and, and still have some type of control and understanding, you know, what's been, what's going on. This will definitely still be a work in progress to, to iron all this out.
Well, most of it is gonna have to be done administrative. We can't have.
Now, that's the whole intent is put in the parameters that we're comfortable with and then let it all be handled administrative instead of having people having to come to a meeting.
Waste of thirty, fixing back in days.
Exactly.
That is open to me, the, when you said the school, who would I talk to move forward?
Schools aren't open at this time.
No, I wouldn't say the school, I would say the parking lot, right here in front.
Yeah, who would I move forward?
Maybe I'm saying to yourself.
I, I don't need to tell them.
Reach out to the superintendent of schools.
They have control.
It's there. Their parking, they, they use the parking lot.
During school, during school weekends.
But it's school property, even though it's town property, it's still school property, and I would respectfully ask you around town before you would. If you want visibility, that's what you want, visibility.
On South Main, there's that place, I think, is it called Crossroads?
Oh.
It was an old store or something, they turned it to the church, it's got a huge parking lot, I know they use it for the blood drugs and whatnot, but I never, ever see, I mean, maybe Sundays.
Sundays, that's it.
But there's, I mean, it's, it's right there on South Main or South Cross, yeah, from Walmart area, but that's, and so that would be a private property.
So they would have to pull the permit.
Or sign the permit.
You gotta deal with a bunch of private property people to put your location in, get green light from them, then come through this process.
I think if you wanted to use that, particularly that parking lot, if you reached out to the superintendent and the first selection, that's, but I mean, just out of respect for him, technically, the parking lot is, it's the town hall parking lot, but the school uses it, it's, it's just, but you know, both of them with roof, I'm sure somebody could come to an agreement on that. I don't believe, well, I believe if you build it, they will come, it doesn't matter where it is, it really doesn't. We have a great park up the street.
I like to do it with people, I like moving together, so whatever option we come with, I hope so too.
It's probably the museum has a whole thunder thing every year by private entity going there, um, say, I, as, I saw a bunch of, I didn't have to see people with their tables and I went from the space, um, I don't believe in the whole permits in that situation, would they be required to pull it today? Or is it acceptable?
Well, we'll go back to the showcase for dogs, great spot, one forty, he could do it there as long as he got the ladies to sign off on a permit and file it through you, and they have a lot of downtime, it's right, right up from Golden Gavel, it's right on one forty.
Where, where is?
Uh, you know where Golden Gavel is?
Yeah, that's, that's where I spoke.
Okay, just down the street, just, you go, you go, there's an old farmhouse right after that, between that and the stores, containers. Right there, I mean, it's, it's field, it's grass, there's plenty of parking, they're zoned properly for it.
Now, what would be the process?
You'd have to get the property owner's permission.
Reach out to them and then come in and with their permission run the application and you'd be good to go and
you probably have to show a certificate.
You're gonna do it, well, yeah, but to them, not to us.
No, it's true.
You know, you, you'd have to work out all the particulars because they're landowners. Rather than you, if you did it on town property, you'd have to, you'd have to get a either event insurance or get liability insurance listed into town as a whole arm. Probably easier to go through private entity if you can get their permission, but then you have to do it, I mean, if you're gonna pop them up and do these twice a month, three times a month, it's gotta come in every time or we could, that's what we're gonna have today.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, one and done, and then come back next year and say, do it in the same place, if that's, you know.
Is there any, is there anything on this application that allows you to run a chain of dates? Is, you know, somebody said, I'm gonna, I'm gonna do, that I'm gonna do for the next four Sundays in a row or something like that, so rather than having to come in before.
Oh, yeah, yeah, for sure.
There needs to be, yeah, a spot on there, is it, is it one time or is it a seasonal event?
Yeah, dates, so, they give you the option there.
Wait, a wedding hall and stuff like that, same.
Indoor.
Yeah, I guess it depends on.
Right.
Events, yeah, so.
Be involved in that.
What if it was church? People would have, who was a church, St. Philip's on, they have a huge parking lot in the back, and then, I don't, or it's not St. Philip's anymore, it's Mary and Cole.
So when they changed that?
Wow.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
Would that fall, or mean?
Help indoors, inside?
Well, if you were indoor and outdoor, like, you, you'd get premium price for someone that wants to be inside and, you know, it'd be twenty-five dollars outside, fifty dollars inside.
Cause I'm thinking like when they held the, was it like the home shows from inside the old Walmart building? Was there anything required on that?
Oh, I don't know.
Probably not. Cause I think that.
It's indoors, so it's kind of.
But, but you're still.
I know. That seems to be.
It's an event and it's, I guess, the easiest way for me to try to understand is, if it's an event, it's on private property and, and it's open to the public, you need a permit. And the permit will default to, if you're serving food, it has to get signed off by the hell, if you're serving alcohol, it has to be signed up on the police. Or it doesn't matter, the police are still gonna look at it for traffic issues.
Yeah.
Simple enough, and you want a revolving, it could be multiple dates.
I think that's the, the spot where we've been missing, the outdoor ones seem to get a little more scrutiny, indoor events.
Well, yeah, but I agree, I think an event's an event, you know, if, if it's, if it's in an, on, I mean, so if it's at La Notas, it's legal. Unless it's outside, right?
Is it open to the public, I guess that's the trigger.
But he's open to the public, he's a, he's an event hall. Right, his site is inherently already been reviewed for groups of people to show out. It's okay, but if I'm gonna have it at trying to think of an example, the old mushroom factories. You know, whatever, Sophia's in the plaza. Which is the one that came in, right, that was the one that ultimately couldn't move forward?
That was outdoor dining, no, the Bastille Plaza was the one.
Bastille Plaza, right, but even last year, or maybe before, when, when there was this unofficial guy doing CEO, Bastille's wanted to do something on the concrete pad over on the side, they wanted to do some kind of event thing with tents and all that, and I think in-house, we told them no. Cause no bathrooms, no this, no that, so.
It was going through the review process and it didn't make it through.
Right.
Okay. Get some input on which direction.
Damn. We will have it on a future agenda to look at again. Under other business now.
So Reese and I have been reading through, we started with, of course, COVID affected everything, so starting going through, there's some from twenty twenty, a lot of twenty one, and then started kind of a new section of new complaints for twenty twenty-two, we've taken, we went through each one, followed up on the one that could be followed immediately, everything is written with the most recent status first and then going down the line. We tried to consolidate the report for y'all, so you didn't have to wait through all the information we have, but of course, so we gave you the basics, we added the issue, comment, what's the status? We have ourselves a law, a larger administrative report, so if there's a specific property, you have more questions about, you know, we can give you all.
you know, we can give you all the details of the information. For this, the purpose of this report, so you can see what's been going on, we put the, anything that's been closed recently, we put in yellow, which will do this, we're trying to figure out, maybe once a month, the first Tuesday or the yellow complaints will be moved to the following month to, we have a closed stat status too, just to keep record of everything. And anything new, then will be, you know, we'll.
This is perfect like this.
Okay.
Yeah.
We didn't want to.
Yeah, no, this is good, really good.
Can you explain one for me, this seventy-four Main Street with the shed being in the front yard? What's the resolution?
There were a couple issues there, that was before Daniel started. So that one he had the business vehicles parked on. The letter went out, it told him, couldn't do the vehicles anymore, the shed wasn't up, he didn't go mine.
The shows is closed and nothing's been done with the shed.
Yeah, Margaret Drive, we went all through that, remember last year? Margaret Drive business.
That one twice you reclosed out them, so there.
I mean, we're just gonna say you're illegal and you just walk away and that's it.
You can visit for sure. We can revisit, add that one to where I was with it, if I actually looked.
Did we ever figure out what he was doing?
Well.
I'm afraid to peek my head over. I'm just, my, it's on, it's on Main Street, it's very visible, so if anybody comes, the first seven forty shed in my front yard.
Right.
I got one right down here that that I want to do just like either. Okay. It's a prefab.
Oh, it is? Close.
I'm interested in that twenty Margaret Drive because that became more and more of a complaint. And there's no, there's absolutely no question in running a business on residential property and nothing's been done.
We have to catch, I'm gonna get up and crack it down when they.
It's a residential property.
You know this one, twenty Margaret Drive, but yeah.
So in the corner of the.
Yeah, and then we had the complaints of the chainsaws or something else.
When we looked at that, there was all kinds of stuff on the grand list and DMV records.
Yeah, right, that we, yes, and they were.
So I don't, I don't think that, I think we had plenty without peeking over.
As a business.
And you heard from me, turn in.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That one's still open, there's a few that are kind of complicated situations that we're, we've been figuring out step next. There are some cars. You know, there's a lot of. On Bridge Street and that letter got sent back when the gentleman was sick and then, so there's some situations we have to really go back again and then kind of figure out from there. There's a couple, we have some car, we're doing one big sweep of different car dealerships and auto repair places as one separate category that we have on a list. And we put ongoing for those to go see which ones have actually complied at that point at this point, because that's a whole other category that we need to take care of.
So one big thing about the car dealership around that subject, a lot of people park their cars off. Things later they park them on the grass.
Yeah.
All the time.
And that's the initial.
Yeah.
Pointed that out. Yeah, it's a.
They do it all the time, they're like, you drive that, I see like six or seven of them a day.
There are, there are some that are really good all the time and some that are really bad all the time.
What's that corner, home mobile station in the corner?
Christie's.
The old Christie's.
Was it?
The old Christie's.
It used to be the mobile station.
Torchlight.
Torchlight.
Torchlight. That guy parks two parts in the grass religiously every day.
Yes. John, he's got his on the side.
He's got permit for that though.
No, he's got him up. As you're heading south before you can put them. Not in the field in the back room, the fence was even permitted.
Well, he built that whole new building there though.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're treating that as a separate category that we're taking care of.
That's a whole issue.
The own issue, of course, yeah.
Okay, that's what we're gonna mention it.
So then the tenant, so we kind of do some issues too that have been there for a while, so for instance, it's kind of at twelve something, it's one of the last. We have almost to this twenty South Main is the, as the owner that has made a complaint about the property across the street. It's over before you get to huge smart, a huge field. There's a real estate sign that is a constant issue with complaints, but it's been there for like fifteen years, I mean, Connecticut general statutes eight, but it's eight thirteen, say that if something has happened enforced and it's been there for three years and now now takes non-conforming legal use and we can't.
In the state road anyway, so.
Well, it's, it's South Main Street, just by, it's a real estate sign that's on that field right next to where they built the park site. And twelve south.
Okay.
So the homeowner across the street is hanging on the state sign.
Basically, we can have a billboard.
Yeah. But it's been there for over fifteen years and it just you don't really know.
He's not complaining about the billboard that's collapsed and falling down.
That's getting fixed.
But he's complaining about the sign that's been there for since Al Rodrigo on the property. Yeah, for twenty, but they're over twenty years.
So we haven't, you know, we have been complaining, not going, our intention is not to act on that for those that's an existing non-conforming. And if we were to start pushing real estate signs.
They can have them down around.
And there's places that have been trying to be marketed for years and years. Signs of, they have a long time.
Interesting complaints, very interesting, I read earlier, look down on that wall, people go.
Hold her on my desk. I have another one. My desk, this thing, it's got, it's old. There's some of the addresses are in there.
Yeah.
It just helps you with history.
Read the one of them, like friends have closed out. And that's just the other.
And the Charbonneau.
Like, oh, boy. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. The zoning, I mean, we don't deal with electric. And she was complaining about offense, but it's one parcel with separate units of mobile homes, so we not regulate a fancy, remember neighborhood between the two mobile homes. But we've got, we've got a couple of sticky situations, we have a, we have a camper on button. Living on it.
Yeah.
But it's parked on the street, now we got, I sent them a notice of violation because they are hooked up electrically to seven, to seventeen Broadway. So we could get them on a violation because we could show that it was hooked to a property. If they unplug that, they're just technically parked in the park on the street.
And we can't do nothing about a park down the street unless there's a parking ban.
Right, so the police department says, you're allowed to park on that street, you're not allowed to live in a trailer, but how to prove that if they got hooked up, I mean, they're like.
She's a generator.
Oh, yeah, there's some, there's a very interesting situation that's going on, but we find there really deal deal with the malls.
You're doing a great job, so you haven't lived in this town very long, right?
I would say, just as an observation, give the director of public works pause, don't give the rest of us a black eye and just put DPW, put his name down.
Understood. Yeah, like I said, if there's any specific questions, you are probably able to do all history comments.
The Yaski Road complaint, if you're going to the back side of uh, what's the apartment place there? Two old trucks back there that have been back there since the father.
Yes, so does that now fall under this? It's been over three years that it hasn't been enforced.
Well, I don't think a junk vehicle would be considered.
Okay, so not any violation that's been allowed to exist.
But if you go in the back and if you go like in the back, you can, there's there's three old trucks and the the people in the apartments don't, and you can barely see them, soon as leaves can let me not gonna see me, but they've been there.
We're managed out there.
Well, yeah, I mean, and it's a farm and they're, you know, I don't know if they're farm, I mean, there's an old red truck back there that he uses for, well, he used to use for storage. They're all George Yaski stuff. So. But right, I mean, it's far enough, it's not on the property line, it's far enough on that property, it's just a matter of.
I mean, is the land still designated farm land?
Yeah, that's all.
There's no restriction on farmers on how much man chug material that they.
Jump off the tractor.
Where it dies under its stage, yeah.
Can't understand it, then they complain about how much it cost to do it.
Something about the place before you get to the gravel. There's a farm with all those tractors that are.
And then you use.
For sale.
I don't know, I thought they were falling apart. There's a whole bunch of them right there and I thought it's not to make vehicle violation, there's no such thing.
But if it's designated farm, it's farm equipment, but I don't think that it's in. They spun the property off. Yeah, because you need one minimum five acres, I think it is. And they don't have it. Well, he's a scrapper. Yeah, he's a scrapper and he's been cleaning it.
That way house.
Yeah.
A booster on top of the car.
Oh, I believe it, yeah.
If you use roosters on the road, it was getting all tiny, right?
There's a couple of them that are. One stand, there's that one.
There was one on.
I was looking for my name of the year. Illegal house in the back.
Yeah.
Standing water, then there was a one.
Yeah, since miscellaneous started unsettling materials, storage trailer, two campers.
Oh, that's Rocketville House, I think. Four, I don't have it there. Was for sale. Yeah.
But I don't know if they moved them or. I don't know.
Oh, he's, he's the sunburn. Oh, he's been there a long time.
Well, somebody put their, they dropped a bunch of.
It's a father's.
Yeah, that's definitely a bathroom. The wells were one. That's rocket.
One twenty-four well.
Twenty-four well, that's been a fan of. About a year, two, three years at least. Yeah, she should drive the bus, this is rocket.
We have a note for a follow up.
But the house was for sale for a while and they sold it, I think, and now that it's still pending for a while, then it's gone.
Thank you very much, this was very.
I want us updated every month and make it smaller.
What's next?
Good job. Good job, very good job. Right, correspondence.
We did get a notification today from South Windsor. CBA application, you won't see it in your packet and I don't have anything, but it was for swimming pool, somebody's going for a variance and their property is within five feet of East London.
What you pulled.
Yeah. She's asking for eighty. I don't think that.
And nothing for business meeting, no executive say. So, anybody else have anything? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Look, Brad. I made the motion, we adjourn.
We have a motion, maybe we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.